Actually, open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I also get a motion to approve the open and closed minutes for the February 7th and the February 21st meetings?
Take a motion we approve, open, closed, open for February 7th and closed, open for February 21st.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, first up and only up is Capitol and Non-Recurring Projects, Mr. Pender and Mr. Bariclo.
Mr. O'Donnell.
All right, there we go. Whole team.
Good evening, President Bennett, Dr. Salin, Board Members, Executive Team. For the record, I'm Sid Pender, Chief Operating Officer, and next to me is?
Jim O'Donnell, Maintenance Forum.
Darrell Bariclo, School Facility Planner.
So tonight, we are here before you just as an informational item to present to you the Capitol Budget for FY '25. And just to go through a couple of things, this is a working document. And if you remember, we came back in October, we had a few items on there that was, I just want to make sure I'm clear, that we're IAC, state-funded, and county-funded. And we also had a couple of items, as you see, on the left that we knew we were going to go ahead and ask for anyway. We have that on there. The items below the thick black line are items that, after we've gone through, we've listened to all of the principals' presentations during our budget, the supervisors' presentations, you know, also maintenance. We take all that information into account and we go through it and we start looking at, you know, items that are life safety, you know, ADA, is it the end of their life cycle? And also, you know, we try to look at it, you know, equity, so that every school gets a little bit of something each year. You know, some schools are in that cycle to get a little bit more. But the other item you really want to look into, you know, you want to look at the, okay, athletic portion, you want to look at the drama portion, are we kind of hitting all of those elements? And I'd say probably, I don't know, eight or nine years ago, one of the items that the county commissioners really kept requesting was a kind of a steady budget item from us in Capitol. And again, all of the items that you're seeing tonight are, nothing is related to the state. It's all locally funded, all by the county. And we did that for several years. They seemed to like it because it wasn't like a roller coaster going up, going down. It was just one steady, you know, number that would fluctuate between like $1.5 and $2 million. We have not done this in the past several years. We've had several meetings with the county, along with their CFO, and really want to get back to this steady number. And when we get through this, that number each year is about $3 million. And when I say $3 million, you're going to look at it and go, oh, Sid, there's, you know, $13 million on here. But you take out some of the outliers of the central office, you take out, you know, $9 million, you take out the BOE Central Office of furnishing that, and then you come down more realistically to the $3 million. And out of that $3 million, what we've really tried to do the past several years is be proactive instead of reactive and putting items on cycles. Painting for the schools, about every eight years, we go through and will, you know, that school will be up to be painted again. We've finished all of the elementary schools, now it's time to do Mata Peak Middle School and work on that. So many others that we had, milling and paving of the different schools, we've never, you know, touched that in years past, except for the past couple of years. VCT, which is the flooring in schools. A major one is the interactive boards within our schools that we've put on a cycle, along with playgrounds and furniture. And there's a couple of other items. We have gone through really and looked at the age of the equipment, whatever item it pertains to be, and gone through and did a life, you know, cycle analysis on it of when we need to replace certain items. So when we, when you look at this, again, we're trying to create something that is stable for year after year after year. Of course, inflation, you know, comes along and the price will go up, but getting this will get us onto the pattern of, you know, being proactive. You're always going to have an emergency, you're always going to have something where, hey, we thought we could get three more years out of that and that just didn't quite happen. So when I say it's a living document, it truly is because it could change at any time while Mr. O'Donnell comes and says, hey, the, you know, boiler's down and such and such, and it's done. Even though we inspect it every year, those things happen. So if you don't mind, we were going to go through, touch base on it, jumping between the three of us. If at any time you have any questions or you want to wait till the end to ask them, that's fine. This is just for informational purposes only. And again, we've, you know, gone through this over and over and over again to make sure that we're not really missing any items. So Mr. Bariclo, do you want to talk about to start us off?
Sure. First on the list, the top of the list is the BOE Central Office. The $9 million is representing the second year of construction funding. The first year of construction funding, which is current, this year, is actually what's allowing us to go under contract and begin construction in February and March, which anybody who drives by can see that they are underway with installation of silt fence. So the $9 million here represents the second year of construction funding, which will be also the final year of construction funding. Below that, this is the $1.5 million that has been set aside for furnishings and equipment to basically outfit the new central office. Moving on is Ken Island High School storm sewer repairs. You might recall, last summer, we engaged in some storm sewer repairs as well as taking down some of the vegetation, trees and growth that was around the two sediment, not sediment, I'm sorry, stormwater management ponds that were in front of Ken Island High School. When that work, excuse me, when that work was undertaken, it really brought to light some additional repairs that weren't, that were not known when that project was started. So the county asked the contractor to kind of do an evaluation of what was needed and put together a ballpark price for making the repairs that are over and above what was done last summer. This figure that's in here is representative of that estimate. And we've talked with the county, we're going to look to piggyback on their contract so that we're not going through an exhaustive bid process because trying to bid that work would be really difficult to do because it's all basically unknown work that would take a lot of documentation to explain so that bidders could bid it, is essentially what I'm trying to get at. So that $703,000 is representative of completing the additional repairs that are needed out at Ken Island. And then that would allow us to go in FY '26 and look at milling and paving to bring that school up.
I have a question about that, though. If it's unknown work, how did they bid it, the current company?
What they, what they did was they, they were under contract to do the work that they were, that they were scheduled to do. And what they did was they took scopes and ran scopes down through the lines and saw where lines had been split open, where gravel, when these lines get split open, they fill with gravel, they fill with other infiltrated material that clog these lines up. They also know that manholes, they pull the manhole covers off and begin looking at the brick that bring these manholes up. A lot of deterioration has occurred as well as, I don't want to say substandard materials, but they're just materials that have degraded over the 25 years that they've been in the ground. So a lot of that investigative work, they've already done, and that's what has given them that number. The issue would be is it would be trying to engage an engineer to begin to illustrate all of that into a bid package would probably be somewhere to the tune of $75,000 to $100,000 to put a package like that together to bid it. Plus, it would take several months to put that kind of a bid package together to bid it. And since we're already got a firm number that he can do and it's already a negotiated contract with the county, the county is fine with us piggybacking onto that contract.
Did we pay for that investigative work or did they?
The county paid for that within the Phase 1 of the project that they did.
Thank you.
Sure.
And just to piggyback on there real quick, that funding right there, we were supposed to be able to pave Ken Island High School this summer, but there's no point in doing it if we're going to be out there digging and carrying on. So that's why we deferred that project for one more year. Sorry.
Correct. And similar to some storm, stormwater issues, we have issues at Kennard Elementary School where last year, we dug up the playground areas and we kind of discovered some work that was done probably about 20 years ago that really is not code compliant today, that's creating a lot of problems with drainage issues. It's actually causing some issues with some very dramatic settlement in that side parking lot. If you go out there and look at that side parking lot, we have an inlet in the asphalt out there that is just continually sinking. That what we're, what we're going to do, we would bring that up, repave around that area as well as create a code compliant and more compliant stormwater management area that would pre-treat the areas before it bled offsite and so forth.
Well, bad for Kennard, they've had a couple of malodorous issues going on the last couple of years.
And this would, this would take care of the design funding for that. It's a relatively small project, but we want to make sure that we acknowledge that we've got to do the design this summer and then we could bid it out and get that work completed FY '26, which would be summer of '25.
So moving on down to Queen Anne's County High School Stadium, field lighting replacement. Our goal would be to replace Queen Anne's this year, next year do Ken Island. Both of them are about 24 to 25 years old. The goal will be to put in LED lighting. The last thing that, again, we're trying to be proactive, the last thing I want to be in, in the middle of a football game or the middle of your fall season and the lights go out, it's not going to be something that is fixed like the next day. And if you go around to the county, you know, a lot of their lights at their parks have been replaced, which, you know, is wise to do because that will have a long-lasting effect because it's not going to be fixed tomorrow after it. And we've actually replaced the, all the wires over the years inside of the poles. So it's about that time for that. The interactive display for high school, I'm sorry, for elementary high school, middle school, that would include replacing all and standardizing Churchill Elementary School, Arise and Mata Peak Middle School. If you recall, last year, we did Kennard Elementary School and Centerville Middle School. The, we're standardizing the equipment so we get 10 years out of that cycle instead of like the current six to seven years, which I can tell you that we're past that already on, on some of these because they've been deferred. The next one would be Sellersville Elementary School replacement. That, again, has a life cycle to longevity of it. And we are replacing, as you know, Churchill Elementary School, Sellersville Middle School, I'm sorry, Sellersville Elementary School is next in line and followed by Ken Island Elementary School. We're also trying to move away from the mulch into, and rubber into a poured-in place with the tiles that go on top of it so it truly makes it more ADA compliant, you know. It is a little bit more expensive, but that's truly the way to go with that. Did you want to add anything to that, Darrell?
No, it is definitely the way to go. We're using tiles so that maintenance can go out and easily replace tiles if they become worn or damaged or vandalized or whatever. So it does make for a much better application. The mulch is just problematic, it requires constant maintenance, it has to be rerate and recompacted. It really, they do classify it as an accessible play surface, but, you know, it is a little more challenging to bring a handicapped student out onto that mulch.
So if you, again, go through that, you take out the Board of Ed, Central Office, along with the equipment there, the storm repairs and then, you know, the lighting, again, the next section will bring you down to more of the $3 million mark. Go ahead, Darrell.
Okay. Well, you skipped over the universal.
I'm sorry. Universal pre-K furniture will be covered in the next section and we'll explain that why, explain why to that.
Okay. Just want to make sure we didn't skip anything.
Yes, sir.
Next on the list is the conversion of the BMS, which BMS is acronym for Video Management System, Video Management Software. Right now, we have a camera software system, and I'm talking about our surveillance cameras. The system is rather antiquated, it's no longer being updated by the manufacturer. The manufacturer has been bought by a competitor, and I think the competitor is just waiting for this software to kind of die on the vine so that they can become the supplier that everybody moves to. We've investigated and we're looking at bringing in a new system. Genetek is the new system that we've been looking at and have been considering. And the cost here is $246,000. That's basically the cost of the software for a five-year license as well as the labor that's going to be involved in basically bringing the programming that's associated with taking all of these cameras and populating them into the new software. We have somewhere to the tune of around 600 and some odd cameras that each camera has to physically be brought over individually, named and logged and all kinds of IT type of stuff has to happen to each camera. So that's what that figure represents.
Yes, sir. We're going to go farther down and see other things with cameras and stuff.
Yes.
And I know safety's a priority. What available in grants or anything that's safety issue, like as far as, you know, when you've applied for grants? Because when I look at this budget right now, we're over $3 million. And how can we maybe get it down without losing something? Would any of this stuff be available for grants through the state or federal government?
So we have already earmarked items, I don't really want to go into them.
No, but just general.
Through Maryland Center for School Safety, yes, we have earmarked items for that. And that's a good question. You'll see some security cameras and things added in here. The reason they're added in here is we ran out of, you only have so much money on a grant. And when we do those things, the funding ran short on, you know, incorporating areas inside of Mata Peak Elementary School and Stevensville Middle School. The rest of it was all paid for by grants.
And over this next year, is there any, I mean, I know you don't know until you look, but is there a possibility of getting additional grants so we can get to that $3 million? And I know you can't.
Yeah, no, actually, we just had a meeting two days ago with a grant specialist from, to look at finding some more for hardware for classroom doors and identifying a couple of other things. But there are a couple of bills right now in the General Assembly that are looking to increase the amount that is given to each school based upon that. So we're waiting on that. Some of this, we, not some of it, a lot of our budget is funded through grants of what we can get. And then the rest of it is, you know, going to be locally funded.
I don't want to shoot myself or shoot ourselves in the foot by putting this in, I mean, I want it in the account, I want to get it done. I mean, I think we're for safety, but put it in here and then all of a sudden, you can't apply for it because you already got in in your capital budget, it gets kicked out.
No, we, no, we, we meet with Mr. Sabori and we all worked together to put that out there so that we're not double-dipping and not, you know, thinking something's covered. We just had a meeting today for security cameras with the four of us to go over different items so that everybody's on the same page. But we do try to tap into all those as much as we can.
I have a question about Ocularis. How long have we had that contract with them?
Been a while.
I mean, going over 10 years.
Okay, do we not, when's the last time we approved it for, to renew it? Because I just noticed with the license fee, we're doing a five-year license. So what was Ocularis?
I can speak a little bit to that. Right now, I think the reason why it hasn't come before the board in prior years is I just, it was just brought before me with our meeting with our security specialist. The renewal fee for Ocularis is $20,000 a year. So it would have fallen below the threshold that would have had to have come before the board. But I think the biggest thing here is, is that the Ocularis renewal is coming due August. So what we want to try to do is get in front of this with, with any kind of conversion that we're going to do. And it would be, the prime time to do that would be over this, this coming summer because you've got to kind of take the whole system down and repopulate it. So we wouldn't want to do that during a school year because you're going to lose, you're going to basically lose schools as you move through that process. And then once the conversion happened, you all, happens, you would also lose that recorded footage. So obviously, middle of the year isn't a good time to do it. So we're going to try to look to do that over the summer. So right now, we're in the process, right now, trying to put together some bid documents to get that, get that out on the streets.
So my point was, we didn't have, we don't have any contract moving forward for Ocularis. It was going to be up soon, so it was a time to look for anyone?
It was an annual renewal.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, it was an annual renewal and the Genetek, they can do it annual or they can do it in five-year blocks. It's just the initial setup, they do it as a five-year. And then after the five-year, you can either opt for another five-year renewal or you could go annual renewals.
Thank you.
All right. As furniture replacement, as you all know, the, we have struggled to have a furniture line item in our budget every year. The only way that we have replaced furniture over the past several years is through the Esser Grants. Cafeteria tables, you know, at Bayside Elementary, we were able to replace those at Kennard several schools. And then you get to the point where you're welding items back together, which is just not safe, it's just not the way to handle it. So we've kind of come up, not kind of, we've come up with a plan. So about $600,000 will get us to be able to piece one school completely done, another school completely done, do a couple at a time. So what we don't want to do is, all right, we're just going to pick, you know, fourth grade here and do fourth grade at this school because it's never going to match up, it's never going to work. We're very fortunate, so say like at Bayside Elementary School, we were able to purchase chairs through the Esser. All we need to do there is replace the desk now. That one's done. Queen Anne's County High School, we were able to get, I'd say pretty much half of the school done, replaced. And you're looking at furniture that, you know, some of it was 30, 40 years old. I think Mr. O'Donnell was there when he, when they had it. But they, it's just a line item needs to be there and we can go through that life cycle just like everywhere else. And that would include the pre-K furniture in there. Mata Peak Elementary School, the VCT again, there's a life cycle of 20 to 25 years. We've done Graysonville Elementary, we've done Ken Island High School, it falls in line. Next, Stevensville Middle School, HVAC, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yeah, so we're looking at replacing a second unit, a second section of units, which is going to take care of 13 classrooms and approximately seven different hallway units. Last year, we had an emergency and we had to replace one, was like $47,000. We're trying to stay ahead of this one. The units that were installed at Stevensville Middle School were obsolete about five years ago. So we're trying to stay ahead on these LG units and look at the next section. As we go forward, we'll be able to, the price tag hopefully will come down because this is the next, second biggest unit that supplies that building.
Ken Island High School, basically, again, we ran out of grant funding. There is one side on the bus side, it has a buzzer to come in, but it does not have an headphone to enter on this side that is where the buses park and where the stadium is. And then we have Mata Peak Elementary School and Stevensville Middle School adding surveillance cameras there. Those were additional cameras because of the grant funded ending, ended, and we didn't have enough money to keep on going with that. I'm kind of grouping the next three together, Queen Anne's County High School Stadium Scoreboard, the Gymnasium Scoreboard, and the scoreboard at Ken Island High School. They've come up the past several years when the principals come in and also the athletic directors. And if you've been to several of the games, you will see sometimes they just go out. Again, 25 years old and you're not getting parts the next day to fix those. Um, again, twenty-five years old and you're not getting parts the next day to fix those. Um, imagine middle of the wrestling season or basketball season having that happen, being proactive, replacing those. Um, so that we stay ahead of the game, I guess literally. Um, so Centerville Elementary School, uh, computer lab, media center classroom and Mata Peak Elementary School, computer lab, um, and fourth grade classroom. This will be redesigning and putting up um a couple additional walls to make room for pre K. We need one more room for pre K at Mata Peak and one more room at Centerville Elementary School. We've met with the principals, we've walked over, um, we've looked at, you know, Mr. Bearclo's Drawings and Mr. O'Donnell's going over the electrical work um to, to come up with these solutions for that. Um, Mr. O'Donnell, you want to talk about the nurses' expansion?
That was, that was Darrell's.
It is, yeah, it is mine. Okay, uh, Centerville Middle School, the nurses' space expansion. Um, it's not so much of an expansion as just more or less a, a kind of a reconfiguration. Uh, the bigger issue that we have there is that there is not an isolation room presently in that space. So we're just putting up some partitions and moving some things around to kind of give them a little bigger area. So I, so I guess technically it is an expansion, but we're just move, kind of just moving some things around in that back admin space to give them some space that they need to, to take care of folks in the interim between now and when we get a new building, hopefully. So, so that's, that's, that's what that line item is for.
The next one is the um sidewalk from Centerville Middle School to Queens County High School. This is another item that we've heard um from parents for several years that have students that live behind the Y M C A that really want their children to be able to walk to school, to and from school. And then once the Y M C A opened up, it really created um more need for that. Uh, there is currently no sidewalk there, so either the kids walk through the field or they walk on the road. Um, and we, we just don't allow that right now. Um, we did look at grants for this, uh, but by the time you do the uh Safe Route to School Grants, it goes to the federal government and your price tag will pretty much jump up three times um with all of the different requirements. But that is a, an item that keeps coming up and I receive phone calls about every other week about, you know, when is this gonna be done? Um, Darrell.
Sure, the next two, uh, Ken Island Elementary School and Stevensville Middle School. Uh, these are to add and incorporate community health centers at these two schools. Uh, similar to what was done at um some of the other schools. I know we've, um, it was the most recent one, Sudler's.
Sudler'sville Middle.
Sudler'sville Elementary.
Meadow, Churchill.
Yes, Churchill, yeah. And um, so it's basically um incorporating Chop Tank Health uh in to bring community health services in uh for, for those two schools. And we are looking at an F Y twenty-six, another two schools, and I believe a fifth in twenty-seven.
Just for the people on color vision, community, I, when I hear community, I hear community. When I hear, but it's for school based people.
It, it, it is, and um, I briefly, the, the brief description of it is, is that um, if, if a student needs an immunization or something like that, instead of having to go through their, through a primary care and being taken out of school, parents can give authorization for those type of immunizations to occur within the school. And it's a very quick and in and out thing. Um, if they have um something like pink eye or whatever, they can go in and be, be evaluated for that and, and that sort of thing. So it, it is, it is school based, but what it's trying to do is, is he- to help keep kids in school to get basic health needs taken care of and not have to be taken out for, for a day.
But if, if somebody has a student at a private school or something else, it's not for a community, it's for a community based schools.
That's my understanding of it.
Right, it, it's a partnership with Chop Tank Health. So um, we can open it up to the communities and we try to organize them so you can. Sorry, I was looking in here because it, it's not Ken Allen Elementary School and I have to look back at my notes and I couldn't find it. I believe it's, I believe that first phase was Graysonville Elementary School.
I'll go back and look at my notes.
Yeah, um, we have five altogether, two for next year. And, and I couldn't find it in my notes, but I believe that that's.
That's Graysonville.
It is Graysonville?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, my mistake.
That's okay, Graysonville.
Sorry, my mistake, I put this together, so that is my mistake.
But there, but, but it is an opportunity for the community. So Chop Tank Health is um an organization that we partner with that during the school day, they serve and open up to our students. The extra advantages, our staff can actually participate as well. But the purpose of them is to serve students in the schoolhouse. And when we create a community opportunity, usually the ideal situation is that we have access to the outside so they can come in and use that facility without having to use our schoolhouse. So you'll notice that when you go to um Sudler'sville Elementary School and when you go to Churchill Elementary School, the access point is sort of from outside directly into the health center, not coming through the school. So then that can be used on weekends and it can be used in the evening hours um for community to access it.
So those places are open to, open to community.
Yeah, so um, so Sudler'sville Elementary School will actually be a community health center. And so parents can come in and bring their children into that community health center.
Take children that are under twenty-one, is there any limits on who can come in there?
Yeah, and, and like if I have three children in the school district, but I have a child that's not school age ready, I can bring them as well. Um, so they have provisions for that.
College student that's uh thirty-five years old?
No, 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 this is for our immediate community that we serve for our school system. Um.
But did I understand it right that parents can give permission for these kids to go to these health centers without them?
Yes, so.
So like pre K, so we're opening up with our pre K expansion, so if a parent's willing, they could sign something saying their pre K could go in and talk to this health professional?
It has to have, so this is how it works. So a parent would sign up in the beginning of the year to say that Patty has permission to be seen at your facility. And then Patty comes down, she's got an itchy eye, the nurse calls the parent and says Patty's here, may I? The nurse, they have to, the gatekeeper is the actual, our nurse. Our nurse then says, yeah, I think that this might need an opportunity to go over to our school based health center. They contact the parent and the parent gets permission for the nurse practitioner to be able to um interact with the child and provide care for the child. And it saves, you know, and the littles, obviously, it's a, um, I'm certain that parents are much more hands on. But as a upper elementary, middle school, high school student, the parent probably gets permission and, and is, you know, fine with the, the child going in and being seen by the nurse practitioner, maybe even getting drops or whatever they would need to resolve that. As I said, they can do um, you know, preventative type care where, you know, we have sports seasons coming up so they can go get their physicals done there. Parent can sign up on permission for that, for them to get those types of things done as well.
Whiteboards. Whiteboards. All right, so we have, we've asked for uh to finish the installation of the whiteboards at Canard Elementary. Uh, last year we only, only did the ones that were located behind the interactive boards. This year we'll put a new whiteboard on the other end, which is, right now is a chalkboard. Um, so we're gonna retrofit these chalkboards to whiteboards so that gives them more space to utilize.
So how many do we think that is? I think we did, did we do thirty-six last year with Canard that the install?
Something like that, yeah.
And so how many do we think that this forty-five?
Oh, it's not as, not as many this year, um, but they're just longer, they're twenty.
They stretch the length, the whole length of the room.
I want to say twenty-four, twenty-eight foot whiteboards. Um, the existing, and these are going over to existing slate, black chalkboards. So it's like, we can't, if we take them off, we're, we're gonna have a mess up on the wall. So it's much easier to go with a retrofit right over top of it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, blinds at Churchill, uh, Sudler's, Centerville Elementary, Churchill Elementary and Mata Peak Elementary. We're, we're seeing a, a drastic damage or vandalism with using mini blinds in classrooms. So this is to replace those mini blinds and go to shades, pull down shades, the new pull down shades. According with the new federal laws, will be pulled down with new strings. So they just, you pull them down and bring them down and that's where they stop. It's no longer a cord or um a pull cable on the side, which that's usually the larger issue. Um, the mini blinds are loom room and they get torn up because everybody wants to pin artwork or this or that on them. So. Um, Churchill Elementary, we have, I think it's five expansion classroom walls that the original design when the building was renovated in ninety-eight was to expand those class, two classrooms into one. We're looking to remove those walls and make them permanent walls. Um, so that we don't have to continue to service those walls, those moving walls and the rollers. Um, once that happens, we should, it'll be all be a permanent wall, then we can put a, add whiteboards or chalkboards or bulletin boards to those walls.
Moving on, uh, Graysonville Elementary School, this is a uh replacement of the main act stage curtain as well as the, the rear traveler. Um, this has been in for, um, ever since the, the, the school was uh originally constructed. So they're, they're in pretty drastic need of replacement.
Uh, Ken Island High School repiping of the boys and girls shower room. Evidently when that building was constructed and back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, the piping from the girls' room was piped to the boys' room and the piping from the boys' room was piped to the girls', the girls' room. Um, I don't know if it was, if it was ever caught, uh, but I know we caught it and we just need to get above the ceiling to invert those pipes so that we can now operate the showers. Um, we've had a request from Ken Island High School to start using the showers again along with some outside groups that want to come in over the summer to use the showers.
Back to uh Ken Island High School, uh, this is again replacing the stage curtain there. That would be the main act curtain, the wings, the rear scrim and the, uh, the back, the back curtain. Um, we did the site investigation on this uh a few months ago and this is in really bad shape out there. Um, it, it needs to be replaced. Sid?
Queens County High School, looking at uh the cafeteria, media center and lobby lighting retrofit. We're looking at, this was done back in the renovation, we're looking at either change the fixtures to get it, make it a little bit brighter, especially in the cafeteria and maybe the lobby. Um, we're looking to go all L E D. Uh, I'm looking at Delmarva grants to replace these fixtures with that. So um, we could possibly do more. We've done some larger areas already at, at Queen Anne with, through the Delmarva Power Grants.
That's not available for our outside lighting?
Well, we've already done that, I'm actually used that for Queens County High School, Canard, um, quite a few buildings. It's like, last year I did five outside light buildings, uh, either the parking lot or the building lights themselves along with changing the, the controls over. Um, we're looking to probably in the next probably two years to upgrade some of those existing lights that were done over the performance contracting about twelve to fifteen years ago.
Okay, what about that three hundred and sixty thousand stadium field lighting?
No, you can't get a grant for that, so.
All right, thanks.
Um, finishing up almost, uh, Sudler'sville Middle School has asked several years in a row for additional risers for the chorus. Um, according to Mr. Watkins, they have a large number of, of students to participate. And, you know, it's just one of those items, like again, he's, he's asked for several times.
And last on the list is Mata Peak Elementary School and similar to the uh Graysonville Elementary School stage, which is replacing the main act and the rear, the rear act traveler.
So rounding out, you know, it's thirteen million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand and seventy-eight dollars. Um, again, take out the portions of that from the board, brings it a little bit more down to three million. Um, asking for, from the county commissioners. Any questions or?
When I added up, it, it looks like thinking of what you said, it's three million, forty, four hundred and forty-four thousand.
This, like I said, some things, about three million would, would keep us, they're looking for a consistent number.
Right.
And we know that some things might not be calculated here.
Whatsoever over three million, we have some contingencies and stuff that we can move around if we have to, to do that.
Well, and I think, I think we do go back to the point before where right now in legislation, they're looking to expand that current safety grant we have um over several years. They're adding to it more this year than more the following year, more that's like a long term. Um, and some of those things, if that comes to fruition, we certainly can pull out some of those things from here. It's a little different than your title grants where there's supplanting involved and things that doesn't apply, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Pender, that supplanting concept doesn't apply to that. So if we do get additional fundings because of legislative decisions this year, we can certainly pull out some of these items that are school safety related.
And, and something else also to think about, some of these numbers are firm, hard numbers, like we know that's exactly what it's gonna cost. Others are, this is where we think it's in the ballpark after talking to different contractors and things like that. But, you know, we're not gonna jump forward until we know the funding is there to start getting, you know, the actual quotes and bids on that.
So one of the um comments that we had was for the showers, we have people that want to use the showers in the summertime?
So.
Hey, you can answer that one.
So the uh, the actual, the band uh director down there, I, I believe it's called the Tournament of Bands.
Okay.
Um, and like it's professional companies that come in and Ken Island High School would like to host that.
Okay.
Part of um, part of that requires having functional showers uh for hot and cold water is what Mr. O'Donnell kind of meant.
Um, do they pay for participating and using our facilities?
I'm sure they will, I haven't, I don't know the ins and outs of it, but um, I do know, like I said, the band director request that and also the athletic director, but.
Which is a good segue into, I was wondering if we could get an update on how much money we bring in from outside groups?
Sure.
What they're paying and if they are required to do, if general, their own general liability or if there's an R.
They're all required to give certificate of insurance, uh, Mr. Julian Gottlieb handles all of that.
I don't know.
Go ahead.
A quick question, Dr., for Dr. Kevler is being put, I'm only saying this just because um, you know, during our last C A C meeting, there were a lot of parents and, and, and teachers that were concerned about Centerville Middle School. And so I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's something else that we can do. They seem to seem the bathrooms were, I don't even know what some of the words were they, that they used, but it was kind of an over. Now, maybe every other school is just as need, you know, the need is there for all of their stuff. But I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can do to address their bathroom situations at Centerville? I would feel bad if I didn't at least bring it up.
So, so the overall condition of the bathrooms over the years, we have done a lot of cosmetic stuff. Uh, we replaced the drop seal, the plaster seal on them quite a few years ago. We upgraded the Brady sinks, which they were, the old walk up step pedal on them, we made them electronic. Um, if they were taken care of a little better, um, meaning the students and the population in the, in the building.
Say that the kids did a lot of damage.
Last year, we, just off the top of my head, I think we spent like about twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars on two bathrooms over there, just replacing components that they kept tearing up. Um, it was probably more than that if I did across the board. Um, this past month, we've had, had a automatic faucet that was operating fine. Um, evidently, somebody didn't like to spout on it and broke it off. Um, that's, that's, you know, it, it's a minor thing, but that's three hundred bucks.
It's not minor, it's vandalism, it's not minor, is there?
And we think, I think it was an outside group that tore it up, uh, because we have basketball, courts where we have basketball in there Monday through Friday practicing and then they're in there during games on Saturdays and Sundays. So, but I can't, cameras, cameras will show some, but we're not a hundred percent sure. Uh, I would like, I would like to go through and see if we could maybe, maybe spruce them up a little bit. I mean, um, but we've got to get the school population to buy into, just take care of our bathrooms.
Right, okay, thank you, thanks for that, appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I actually, with my student groups here, complaints not, not just from that middle school, but from all the secondary schools about bathrooms and cleanliness and things like that. And, you know, I, I kind of pitch it back sometimes to the students, you know, what can you do to hold your, you know, um, friends accountable for keeping it nice? I mean, this is, we only get one thing, we only get one school and we got to go through it, so we need to take care of it. And, um, and they do come up with some good ideas, but I think it is challenging that we do have a pop, you know, a sliver, small population that wants to be destructive and destroy and. And, I mean, they, they have ripped off, you know, sinks and, and soap dispensers and, I mean.
We did hear that piece, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, and that's challenging, you know, as Ben just said, we don't put cameras in the bathroom, obviously.
Right.
You know, all we can have is cameras who enter and exit.
They tear the door down.
Um, but it's, it's really, you know, torn up, it's, it's unfortunate that our students feel that they need to do that. And as I said, it's not all students, a very small sliver of population. But if we could all, you know, encourage together that this is the only thing we got, we got to really take care of it instead of trying to destroy it would be helpful.
With these outside groups though, is there, I'm sorry, is, is there a way to, is there like, I know that when you go into an apartment, you do a pre-get-in-to checklist, everything's working in order, you sign it off and then when you vacate that apartment, you go look at it again. So is there any kind of way that we check these groups, like, I can't look at everything, but if you know they're using the bathroom and they're, are we able to check it afterwards and if there's damage that they're held liable?
So all outside groups excluding parks and rec because they're supposed to provide their own monitors. But all outside, any other outside group is required to have a custodian that they're paid for. And part of the job is they go in there before, look over it, and then at the end, they go back and look over it. I would say some of the issues come from, you know, and I'm not knocking Parks and Rec, but just the amount of students and people that, that go in there and then having somebody actually follow up with, with that going through. But we do require them to pay the overtime for the custodian to be in there.
Right, okay. Our schools are used morning, noon and night.
Right.
Every, every day.
And that's a good thing for your community, I mean.
Right, not the health center, not the health center.
No.
That's not community.
There's a, there's a price you pay for something to be used. I mean, it's going to be, but one thing I do think is, I'm going to just use a $3 million thing, but I think it's a good thing to have a partnership with the county because it gives you time where we don't get hit with painting and this and this all at one time. And it's a, it, you know, then, and they also bunching thing, I think it makes it easier on them to say, okay, you know, to maintain 14 schools with how many square feet we have, this is what it's going to take just to keep them up. And I, I, I think that's a good thing to have so we can look forward and not sit there and say, okay, you know, we're $1 million, $2 million, $1 million, $2 million, and all of a sudden, next year we're $10 million. You know, I, I think that's a very consistent, I think it helps probably you all to say, you know, what you need.
Well, when you're on that schedule, when the emergency comes up, you are able to have a little more flexibility in pushing something back a month or two to, yeah.
We're very thankful for the.
Yeah, like you said, the capital budgets, it moves.
And they've, they've worked very well, the county commissioners have worked very well with us, over the years with us.
Well, I think we have a, even though I know Centerville School, of course, the other thing is they're here and we're going to build a new one soon. So once you say you're going to build a new one, it's like letting your car fall apart. But, well, I mean, just, you know, you're ready for a new one.
No, it's funny, no.
It's just, it's something, but overall, I find our schools in very good shape. I mean, I appreciate you guys, what you do because I go in any of them, I go buy them. I mean, they, compared to some other places, they get used like that. I mean, we're like a Walmart. I mean, you're there 24/7, doors open, I don't know how these doors work, you know? If it's my house, they'd be off the hinges, I'd have to be there every day, but.
1% said, yeah, this is 1%.
1% of the budget.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anytime Mr. O'Donnell talks about retirement, we, push him for one more year because you can't replace the knowledge that he has of the buildings.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions about, or comments about the budget? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So future meetings and events, March 6th will be our regular board meeting at 6:00 PM and then March 20th will be our work session at 5:00 PM. All right, I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you very much.